Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. I am Councilman Kahari Mosley and I chair the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. For this hearing, we will hear from the Pittsburgh Parking Authority and the Equipment Leasing Authority. We are joined by those from the Pittsburgh Parking Authority at the table. And as we begin this hearing, I ask our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilman. The mission of the Public Parking Authority of Pittsburgh is to provide and maintain affordable, safe, and clean public parking throughout the city of Pittsburgh, to uniformly enforce parking ordinances and laws of the city of Pittsburgh and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the collections thereof, to advance the economic progress of the region, and to do so with the utmost commitment to customer service. The Parking Authority is responsible for 10 parking garages, one attended parking plaza, the Mond Wharf, 7,900 on-street metered parking spaces, 32 surface lots controlling 1,600 spaces, and 33 residential parking program districts. It also oversees the operations of the Pittsburgh Parking Court. And currently, Councilman Wilson is council's representative on the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board. And very quickly, we have a number of parking-related revenues in the operating budget. This is for the city as a whole. This isn't just what we get from the Parking Authority, but for parking tax, we get just under $59.5 million. For meter revenue, we get a little over $9 million. And for Parking Authority tickets, the city gets about $8 million. And of that, $26.75 million parking tax is to be allocated towards the pension per section 272.01 of City Code. And that's all I have for the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. And also, for the record, Councilwoman Barbara Warwick is joined us online. And now, for the representatives from the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm Dave Honorato, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority. And with me is Jody Hart, CFO and Deputy Director of the Parking Authority. As he stated our mission and went over the overview, we're in agreement with that. We have Second Avenue Parking Plaza, too, is missing there. But we're an agency, we board passed our budget last, this month, last week. With that 26 budget, we're anticipating, given the city, just under, just over $28 million next year through the co-op agreement we have with the city that includes what McDevitt went through on the parking tax meter revenue and Parking Court money make up the big share of that. That's all we have for, I don't have a formal presentation.
Okay.
But we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Absolutely.
And just to note that we're, I think, one of the only agency that doesn't receive money from the city, and we're the ones that fund the city.
Thank you. I appreciate that context. Councilwoman Warwick, I'm going to offer you the floor if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, sure. Apologies, I'm in the car on my way down. But yeah, no, could you just give us an update sort of on staffing and, you know, the ability just to, of the Parking Authority to do parking enforcement kind of in the, you know, because I know that you're trying to staff up to, to be able to do in addition to metered spots also, you know, because obviously, we, you know, we hear a lot about parking issues in non-metered spots, but, you know, between metered spots, the residential parking permit program, and then elsewhere, what, you know, how's capacity looking for the Parking Authority?
Yes, we're better off this year coming up in '26 for our enforcement division. We're, besides our officers, which were more fully staffed to capacity, we're also using automated enforcement to do the RPP districts, and we'll be rolling that out for meter enforcement. And eventually, in 2026, we're hoping to do automated enforcement for the non-metered areas such as signage, no parking, and handicap and fire hydrants.
Oh, okay. Well, that's great. That's great to hear. So, and would there be a possibility to for, and I know this is a little bit nuanced in Pittsburgh, but for folks who are parking on the sidewalk, so I know that we have small streets where it's so narrow, right, like maybe I'm thinking up in like South Side slopes or wherever, it's kind of like, there's no choice, just given the size of the streets. But we also have places where it's just like egregious, unnecessary parking on the sidewalk, sometimes on the curb, sometimes completely on the sidewalk, right? Like the whole car is on the sidewalk. Is that something that, you know, and it's just, it's an issue, it comes up a lot, and it's sort of a lot more than our Bureau of Police can handle?
Yes, we, we don't actively enforce that aggressively throughout the city, but we do get to calls concerning that. We inform the complainant that we will enforce it, and not only that one vehicle, but the entire block, because we can't target and force. We do work with the police department, and we kind of have an agreement where we'll allow a vehicle, two wheels on the car, on the sidewalk, if they still can pass through the sidewalk. All four tires on the sidewalk is outrageous, and we do tag that aggressively.
Okay, great. Well, that's good to know. I mean, folks always ask sort of what should they do. I tell them to call 911. I know, I don't know if that's sort of an extreme advice, but, you know, sometimes it's the type of thing where it's like, you have to, you got to get it while it's happening. Is that, was that what you would recommend, or is there another avenue that would be, you know, for folks, you know, if they're walking their kids to school or whatever, and there's just like a car parked in the middle of the sidewalk?
If it's during the business hours, during the day, I would recommend they call us, and we can investigate and go up there that day and look at it. And if it's a continued problem, we can develop an enforcement scheme up here to try to change their parking behaviors.
Oh, okay. That's interesting. So when you say call us, what, is that like call like the direct, is there like a direct line for Parking Authority? Because normally, we tell people to just call 311, but I don't know.
The 311 calls get transferred to us, so if they call 311, we receive those calls.
Oh, and does that happen like in a somewhat timely, like same day or within?
It might be the next day we get them. We don't get them on the same day. I don't have the number of the authority. Do you have the authority's number they could call?
Yeah, direct lines of enforcement.
On our website, they can see our phone numbers to call.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe that would be, okay, then that's just good for me to know, for my staff to know, that we can say, look, if you, if you want to get the, you know, get in touch with the Park Authority today, then they might be able to come out and do it, you know, for those really egregious parking on the sidewalk situations. Okay, I don't think I have, I do, I do want to say, I just want to really compliment your staff. Whenever I call, you know, this guy's always really great about keeping me updated on anything that's going on in my district, what like around, around, you know, parking lots or whatever. And also, I want to say, I really appreciate how accommodating your staff is for like special, when we have like special occasion-type things, like if, you know, if I call in about, I don't know, like it was like on the Veterans Day Parade, or like do, you know, or like if there's a holiday or something like a Jewish holiday, about really being responsive about, you know, either not ticketing, or just kind of, you know, that type of thing around those special events. And everyone's just really responsive and helpful, and I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you for the comments, and well-received. I feel very fortunate. We do have staff that is efficient and, you know, cares about the public's concerns. But thank you for your comments.
Yeah, absolutely. That's it for me, Councilman. Thank you so much. And apologies again for not being in there. I'm actually on my way up now, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I also want to note for the record that we are joined by Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Strasburger, and Councilman Sharland is also online. So I offer the floor to Councilman Wilson. You have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the work you do. Obviously, you know, we work closely together, and I don't really have any questions other than, Peter, when you went over the, you just went over the sheet right here, where basically all the information, yeah? Did you happen to go over any information?
No, we just highlighted a couple things on the budget, but Peter did most of the...
Do you have any information regarding just what I've been briefed on in terms of like the recovery of the Parking Authority, like how that's been going?
Yeah, every year, we've been going in a right, trending in a right direction, recovering. I'm assuming you mean from post-COVID.
Yeah.
This year, if I'm correct, we finished a year about $2 million short of the 2019 numbers. So we've seen the numbers go in a right direction. Meter revenues have exceeded the numbers from 2019, and the garage revenues are roughly about $20, $2 million shy of that.
Okay. Yeah, and I know I'm familiar with it. I just didn't know if there was some, some other highlights that you wanted to just let council know, let the public know on how the authorities do.
No, we're having, we had a good year, and we anticipate having another good year in 2026. Parking coming back downtime, especially out in Oakland, the Forbes Simple Garage is filling up five days a week by 8:30 a.m., Monday through Friday. The downtime garages are filling up definitely Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, and we're seeing more uptick on Mondays and Fridays now with the utilization of those garages. And the meter utilization has increased throughout the city year to year.
Any plans for meter expansion?
Not meter expansion so much, but some paid parking zones. We're looking to incorporate Hazelwood Green in early 2026. That's probably an additional 500, 600 spaces out there where the development's occurring. And then we're always working with Domi and our council if they have any recommended areas for paid parking. So the Hazelwood Green, why I said it's not meter, additional meters, because it's going to be a phone app area only, we won't have meters in that area. We're going to go, since it's a high-tech area, with the phone apps only, and do automotive enforcement in that area.
And as of now, we have all of the, all of the surface lots, like we started on the South Side. And then I know recently, the one on the North Side was incorporated into the camera program. So we have all service lots now are...
13. They'll be going, we're in the beginning of the first quarter of 2026, we'll have 13 more lots that'll go online, but not all 30. So we were strategic about which ones we went with camera enforcement.
I know the tickets have increased, obviously because I've seen the numbers during our meetings, but have we seen more compliance after the first year of increased tickets? Like are people, like it seems like more people are getting caught because, you know, there is a camera system in the service lot. I thought that was interesting, just how much that, yeah, how much the amount of tickets increased. I'm just wondering, are we seeing a compliance with...
Yeah. So on the two South Side lots that are predominantly transient-based because of the nightlife scene, we haven't seen as much turn to compliance as we have tickets in that. But the lot in East Liberty has seen it about three to four months of having camera enforcement go from tickets to compliance. So we're, we're starting to trend down of the parking tickets and trend up with the...
So what I'm hearing is South Side?
Yeah. It has not changed the behavior, but...
Still doesn't want to follow the rules, but...
They're not, I mean, they're not routine parks.
Yeah.
Different parks every week.
They can make you get away with it.
Exactly.
Gotcha. All right, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to give a moment for you to highlight any of the other, you know, basically the health of the authority. I think every year, we definitely use the Parking Authority as a, as like a guidepost on, you know, what the economy, how's it, how the, you know, how the economy is doing. Yeah, so thanks for all your work over there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your support throughout the year, being on the board.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strasburger, the floor is yours for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for being here today. And apologies for missing your, your presentation. I was listening in my office. I, like the, like the council, like Councilman Wilson said already, I have seen, I've been grateful to see that, you know, parking has returned downtown in Oakland and some of the lots and garages. And so that recovery has gone quite well post-pandemic. How, I know that the one thing that, you know, a lot of authorities and agencies were struggling with was recruitment and retain, retaining staff. How are the, how is that going with enforcement officers and kind of filling the positions, the open positions to be able to ensure that enforcement is happening properly?
We have seen an increase now in the staffing levels. We still have some openings here. Our '26 budget probably only has about a handful of open positions here, but we've seen a significant increase in staffing levels in 2025 in both the SME enforcement officers and the garage attendants.
Great, great. I know that was like the one remaining pain point even last year, so good to hear.
And then supplemented by the automated enforcement, we feel like we're at a pretty good position at a staffing level right now.
Yeah, and that was the other thing I wanted to touch on. Automated enforcement, ticket by mail has been such a game changer. I know that we still have kinks to work out here and there, you know, ensuring, and it's just because it's two different agencies. It's Domi and it's Parking Authority, ensuring the proper signage is there to warn drivers and parkers. But in terms of efficiency, I know that's a game changer, and I know that you're always thinking about new and creative ways to be even more effective and to be more, to buy the best possible service. So look forward to working with you in the coming year. I don't have any major questions. Oh, actually, the last one I had thought of was, what are you doing in preparation, both kind of to, in preparation for any, I guess, not negative, but to guard against any kind of unintended consequences, or to reap the benefits of the coming NFL draft?
I'm working with, I'm on the Transportation, Mobility, and Parking Committee with the NFL draft in the city. There's about 30 members on that, so I meet bi-monthly with them now, try to stay on top of things, and so not only give our input, but also be aware of what the road closures will be and all that. So we're trying to deal with that in advance, and we're working with all the right agencies now. So we've invited to the table to participate in the planning process.
Will, do you see an expected bump from that in terms of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority? Street spaces, lots, or is it mostly going to be privately owned lots that reap the benefits?
No, I think everyone's going to see a bump in that. It's all depending on the road closures and access to our garages. We're keeping an eye mostly on 42 Cannon Six, it's a thousand-space garage, but if you can't get to it, that's would be the, what hurts the authority. But if you're able to, the roads are open to our facilities, we should see a significant bump in that weekend.
Okay, great. Good to hear. Well, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now, I'm going to offer the floor to Councilman Sharland, who's online.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize for not being able to be there this morning, but I do want to follow up. So I'm getting blown up about this ticketing situation on the, in the lots in South Side. So can you tell me what our policy is supposed to be on Sundays for ticketing in the lots on Sundays?
Yes, the, we just made a change on that policy, and we're enforcing the Sunday slots and say consistent with the enforcement of the two lots that are in the PED district. And that's what caused the, I guess, the uprising from there. We've worked with the church and the pastor. We've, we'll be rescinding those tickets that were issued on Sunday while they were patrons for masses or services, and will be stopping enforcement for Sunday enforcement in those two lots around the church areas. But the other lots enforcement on Sunday came from the PED request in the city to enforce those on Sunday to help better control the crowds in the South Side in the evenings.
So the way that that was supposed to work was that the PED enforcement in the evenings on Sunday, starting at 6 o'clock, was, you know, we were supposed to have PED enforcement. We were not supposed to have enforcement up until then on, on a Sunday. And I don't know how that changed, you know, but I do, we do need to look into that. It was supposed to be, you know, what, parking was supposed to be free up until 6:00 p.m. on a Sunday.
That was not the case in the PED for the last several months, or at least six months, and we've been enforcing those on Sunday.
Why did that, how did that change?
I think it came through the request of the PED in your office, Councilman.
It certainly did not. We would not have requested that we do full Sunday enforcement.
It's not on the streets. Sir, it is not on the streets, it's only in the lots. And signs went up at the beginning of the year saying that it would be enforced 24 hours, and it has not been up until, until recently. But it was started at 6:00 in the lots to match on the streets. But the meters, there is no enforcement, and the meters are still free on the street.
On the street, but the lots also shouldn't, we shouldn't be charging in the lots on Sundays up until 6:00 p.m. I don't understand why we're doing that. We're, we're not deterring a bar crowd in the middle of the day on a Sunday.
I'll pull out, I'll check the why change six months ago in the lots where the PEDs are. The other lots, again, like I said, we made the policy change and got approval to enforce on Sunday to match the other lots, and that created the confusion and headaches down in the South Side for the services. But we have worked with the church and the pastor, and it's already been corrected.
Well, with the church, yeah, but there were other people that were ticketed as well, you know, on, that work in South Side on Sundays that are used to not paying that. And, you know, Matt sent me an email, kind of laying that out, but unfortunately, some people have already paid their tickets. So, you know, look, this, the problem here is that the PED is such a valuable tool for us in South Side. It's, you know, again, so valuable that other areas of town are starting to look at it. I don't want to, you know, draw an uproar against it and make people hate this program, overthrow the whole thing, and now we have to find additional revenues to, you know, to fill that gap there. I just don't understand why we changed the policy on Sunday. We always wanted people, you know, specifically with, with, you know, all the churches in South Side, we wanted people to be able to park for free up until 6:00 p.m., you know, when, when we're concerned there. So, you know, I do, we do need to look at this, and, you know, I'm, I'm getting, again, requests all throughout from our Business District Manager to, you know, the churches and bar owners all throughout the street. So I, you know, I was very supportive of automated enforcement and ticket by mail and doing that in the lots, you know, and I'm also very supportive of enforcing on Sunday nights, but during the day, we've got to change that.
Yes, I, again, like I said, we've worked with the pastor, and we have changed that now. But the streets have always been free. And the private, I understand the private lots are still charging on Sundays.
Yep. We're not worried about the private lots, we're worried about your lots. So I do, you know, we do have to get to the bottom of this and make sure that we're, we're giving, you know, clear, that people coming to South Side are having, have a clear understanding of where they can park and when they can park there.
Well, it was definitely advertised, Councilman. I mean, the sign's been up three months in advance of us enforcing it. We wanted to give them notice. So it has, it has been advertised on the surface lots itself.
Okay, I'll have to go look at that today. I, you know, that, that isn't, that hasn't been the case. And tell me this, so if we're enforcing on Sundays, is that revenue going to the PED fund?
No, not if it's not in the PED hours.
Okay, so, I mean, it is in, so we're just enforcing on Sundays, and it's going, oh, I guess, so your argument here doesn't make sense to me, because you said the PED is why we're enforcing on Sundays, but it's not going to the PED?
No, I didn't say that's why we increased. The PED lots were enforced Sunday after 6:00 for the last probably year. Then after we did our study and evaluation, we made the decision to increase the payments on Sundays in the other lots in the South Side, too, 24/7.
After 6:00 or before 6:00? So we're doing full day on Sunday in all the lots in South Side?
We were, yes.
And that because of, and you say that's because of the PED?
No, not because of the PED.
So we need to change that. Ultimately, what needs to happen is we need to not be enforcing in the, in the lots on Sundays up until 6:00. So whatever we need to do, I'll work with Councilman Wilson on this, but whatever needs to happen to move forward here, you know, we, and we need to make sure that there's, you know, clear understanding of what the rules are in this district. You know, we're, as we're trying to build the Business District up, we can't have people, we can't have confusion about where you can park your car at what times. So, you know, I'm, I'm really frustrated by this. This has been, you know, not, not a blessing this weekend. Again, I have been very supportive of the, a lot of the work that you have done in, you know, in going to automated enforcement and the work that you've been able to do in the lots. But this has been really, really a headache here. So we've got to make some changes.
I hear you, but I, I hear you. There's nothing you can work with council. It was board-approved for us to do that at the authority. It's not city councils, it wasn't city's council decision or approval. And as I noted before, we've already addressed the situation, and it is corrected.
Okay, so I'll work with council's representative on your board to try to make some changes there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Councilwoman Gross, do you have the floor if you have any questions or comments?
Hi, hold on one sec. I'm switching my microphone. There, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, appreciate it. Again, thank you all. I, I do have some que, but I think I lost you again, sorry.
Yeah, you cut out for a second. We can hear you another.
Thank you. I do want to thank the Parking Authority now. It's been several years of working through the logistics with Domi and community groups and community meetings and my office on vulnerability enhancement district. And so we're really glad to see it get off the ground. We're grateful for our first year of revenue that we get to allocate, and that was read into the record. Just this past week, and we'll be making lots of corners and crosswalks and sections of Lawrenceville, hopefully much safer for people on the streets. But I am, I did pay careful attention to Councilman Sharland's questions, because as we are also expanding especially the footprint of where meters and curbing that is both hybrid or metered, we want to make sure that there isn't confusion. So I'll be watching for that, and also paying careful attention to the new revenue and which ones are allocated to Parking Authority and which ones are allocated to the enhancement district. I know we went back and forth many times over the course of the year about how that additional revenue would be allocated. And, you know, of course, as the council people who are advocating for these changes and put the legislation in place, it seemed to me that 100% of the enhancement should go into the fund. So, you know, we'll, we'll just be watching and waiting. So far, I feel like everybody's comfortable with how it's working. So I do appreciate that line of questioning. I just wanted to confirm something that I think I know, my staff thinks we know, but I wanted to talk about here, which is the ticketing by mail. Can you tell me kind of like how that's going and what's the status?
Yes, Councilwoman, the status is going quite well. We have, I guess, three different types of ticket by mail going on right now. We have the stationary cameras in the lots. We have the smart loading zones, and just recently, we're rolling out the mobile LPRs for street enforcement, for automotive enforcement. They're going well. The tickets are being reviewed by our staffs before they're downloaded to Parking Court. reviewed by our staffs before they're downloaded to parking court. And then, once the parking court receives them, the same process is initiated for a collection of a ticket, just as it was placed on a windshield.
So, give me a sense of like the scale of it. Is it, like, how many tickets is that that are going out by mail?
I believe last month, we issued about 10,000 tickets by mail.
Amazing, amazing. So, yeah, we're supportive of that system. I know that it's, it's something that is, is going to help with enforcement. So, and it's, you know, efficient and all that kind of stuff. So I'm supportive there. I'm glad that's working out. But I'll take the chance to shift a question to complaints that I'm getting. And I think this is probably not unique to my city council district because we have complaints that people have not had street sweeping for like the entire season on their streets. And yet, the complaint I got this week was that they got a ticket for having their car parked during the hours they're not, you know, because, you know, when you're supposed to move your car for the street to be swept. But they got a ticket and there's no sweeping. There's been no sweeping, so they hadn't moved their car because of the doctor's appointment or something. And then they got a ticket. So, I know this has happened in previous years around construction, where there's signs saying, you know, people are forced to park in another place. And we've had to work that out about where ticketing happened. But tell me how it does or doesn't work with the Parking Authority spending the staffing time, let's just put it that way, on like going around and ticketing people when in fact, it isn't really street sweeping day, because their street's not going to get swept?
I hear you, but I would, we don't do that practice. We work closely with Public Works. They call us every morning that the street cleaners are going out in what areas. And then we assist them by sending the vehicle out with the automated enforcement to follow the sweeper. If the sweeper does not go out, if they're all out of commission or done, we do not enforce street cleaning that day. We only enforce when there's an active sweeper going through the streets. And we work daily during the street cleaning season with Public Works on how many sweepers are going out, which area they're going in. And then we send enforcement. So, if somebody received a ticket for street cleaning when the street wasn't cleaned, I'd like to see the specifics on that because that's not a practice. And again, we won't send enforcement out if the sweeper's not actively on the street.
Okay, okay, I hear you. So why don't we do that? I'll follow up separately and we'll, we'll just see what happened in this situation. But I'm glad to hear, and I'll be happy to inform residents that, that those ticketing cars are following actually live street sweepers that are actively sweeping.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Glad to hear it. Last question, last question. I have notes here, and I don't know very much about this, that your board recently voted to authorize some AI for use at the authority. Could you tell us about that?
Yes, we just took to the board maybe two, three months ago, got approval, they're not in yet, for 16 mobile LPR units. They're capable of AI too. We'll continue with the street cleaning, street enforcement, automated enforcement, once these cameras are in and mounted on the vehicles. But they'll also be able to record the streets as they're going down there and create a map or a district of no parking by signage, where a fire hydrant is or a handicap spot is. So as we're eventually down the road towards the end of 2026, when we have the file built, we'll be able to enforce those violations as well as the meter violations as we ride up and down the street for enforcement.
So, I think, did you say the board already approved it?
Yes.
Okay. We have had many discussions over the years about cameras, surveillance, and now increasingly, artificial intelligence. I believe we put legislation in place a number of years ago that I was not, I didn't sponsor, but I voted up support of, that banned facial recognition, for example, from cameras in the city of Pittsburgh. And I realize there's just more and more and more of this stuff on the market. And we have worked with our police officers to make sure that, you know, cameras aren't actually activated unless there's that kind of reason and the chain of command to do so. I have no idea about this technology. You know, what I see, what residents see are the words like camera surveillance and artificial intelligence. So, maybe we can follow up separately to make sure that there isn't anything worrisome to residents. And I, I support their concerns. I do think we all should be vigilant about what kinds of technology we're using, even if it promises to raise revenue and be more efficient and all those kinds of things. There are costs and, you know, there are trade-offs. There are benefits, but there are costs. So, I won't take this budget hearing to dive more deeply into that. But I, and I think, you know, every case that I've come across, I feel like it's important for council to raise these questions.
Sure.
Because residents have concerns about the way we use technology. And again, rightfully so, because it has been misused in different kinds of mediums and in different cities. So, I don't know if you'd like to respond, but that would be my last question.
Sure. Can I clarify? With the AI machines, this is only adding to the mapping of what is on the street. It is not capturing people. That is, there is no video that's being captured. Instead of just being looking for parking rights, it's also looking for other parking violations, like in the bike lanes, if there is a handicap spot, if they're too close to a bus stop, if they're too close to a stop sign. So the AI piece of it is just mapping pieces of data that are on the road, like a fire hydrant. So they're not there to surveil people. It is an added technology to add to the enforcement piece as it's, as it's mapping and driving through. So it is not looking for people. It is not recording people. Anything that is on the stationary cameras in auto modus blurs out any faces. They're not recording video. It's static pictures that are being recorded, and that is all that is saved. So it's not, it's not something that can be used to look for crimes or something else that's happening. This is strictly to be able to add to other piece of enforcement as they're mapping it out, like I said, with pieces on a block, like I said, a handicap spot, a fire hydrant, a no parking zone, things of that nature.
Thank you. I'll just point out, that's good to know. Again, it's good to ask and it's good to have the answers. I'll just add that we learned a hard way at DOMI several years ago. I'm not even exactly sure which of the technology companies they contracted that we broke the contract because the data was captured, but the company claimed ownership of the data and wouldn't hand it over. And then so they were just trying to work us into like an expensive ongoing contract in order to use the data from our streets. So, again, this is another separate conversation. I do appreciate your answering the question about, again, the red flags of surveillance and cameras. That's good to know. But we should all ask a lot of questions when it comes to these big technology contracts. So I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I don't have too many questions. One question I did want to ask was just remembering, it was about a year ago, when you came before us, and it was specifically around the issue of lifting the residency requirement. You said staffing is up. Could you kind of give us a year-by-year comparison of since the residency requirement was lifted, you know, how have you progressed with staffing up?
I don't have that information right here, but I can have it sent to you.
Okay. And even just without like the specified details, could you just, you know, speak from a ballpark perspective of, do you, well, I guess a better way to ask a question is, do you see that lifting the residency requirement has that, you know, began to address the challenges that you had with staffing prior to lifting the requirement?
We had a significant increase even overnight when the residency got lifted, when jobs were posted. That as soon as that was taken off, we saw a significant increase in applicants coming through. We still give priority if they are a city resident, but it literally happened almost overnight. And so staffing has gone up. And I think the other issue of, of any wage discrepancies has been addressed with the new, new negotiations. So I think we're being able to not only get more people in, but have a broader pool to be able to pull from, even, even in non-union staffing, to be able to get significant staffing in just the office areas to be able to broaden that, so.
And I guess with both, I would just add that with both union position and since it's been lifted, I don't believe we turned away any city resident that applied for the job that were qualified. We were able to hire those people also because we were so short-staffed. So it wasn't like we were turning away city residents. We were able to hire those individuals also.
Okay. And my only other question, you know, it's just around coordination, you know, you know, all of us have, you know, numerous, you know, DOMI projects. I'm thinking about a particular project that's at the Board of District Eight and District Nine. I mean, and Councilwoman Strasburg have been, you know, working with DOMI as well as residents on. And we have a meeting coming up on Monday about it. And my question is just around when, you know, DOMI does, you know, do these projects, you know, particularly around traffic calming, you know, and traffic safety. And oftentimes, it involves eliminating, you know, on-street parking. Or is the Parking Authority consulted into that? And are you made aware of when those, those changes are made, when particularly on-street parking, you know, may be removed due to either bike lanes or other kinds of traffic calming measures that DOMI does?
I would say in the past, we have not been. We have a much better relationship now with DOMI. We actually have a standing call bimonthly with them. We don't know all their projects. Sometimes we do find out a little bit after they're approved and going forward and the space has been eliminated. But working with them, if we know of in advance that the space is being taken out of service, either temporarily or permanently, we'll estimate the dollar revenues associated with those loss of spaces and share it with DOMI so they know, can make an informed decision on, you know, whether to keep the project moving forward or not. But again, we've been meeting with them via phone meetings twice a month now and trying to communicate because we realize both department have an effect on each other.
Thank you. And I just want to offer up for anyone here online, if they have any follow-up questions. I see Councilwoman Warwick, she raised her hand about a nanosecond before Councilman Wilson would keep a stack. Councilwoman Warwick than Councilman Wilson.
So I did want to ask, just since we were talking about, what is the history of the no parking on Sunday? I mean, just generally.
Parking's been free on Sundays, on both the streets.
Oh, sorry, that's what I meant, free parking on Sundays, yeah.
On the streets and the lots.
And what's the, what's the history of that? Like, what's the reason for that?
I don't know. It's been that way for many years. I don't know the reasons or why it's that way. It's always been that way. But through the changes that have occurred today in our industry and the parking situation in Pittsburgh, we evaluated and seen the effect on it. And now that we're able to enforce it, we made the decision and brought it to our board and had approval to enforce on Sundays in those certain areas.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I am, and this isn't specific to any particular area, just in general, right, to, to enforcing parking. Like, there's no difference between us. Like, if I want to drive my car somewhere where there's paid parking, right, like, and I want to park my car on public space, I should pay for that, whether it's on a Sunday or on a Saturday or on a Tuesday. You know, so I just want to say that I agree with that. And as far as, you know, and I assume that there is some sort of, sort of like, and, you know, like a religious, you know, history to that, I assume, right, with Sundays and whatnot. But, but, you know, I do want to point out for churches, or, you know, or, you know, religious institutions, it's worth noting that, you know, they don't pay property taxes, whereas like our business owners do. So, so if it's like an argument of like, well, because I know a lot of business owners are like, well, free parking helps because, you know, it's like you can come down to the business district and you can park. But, you know, in terms of kind of alleviating the burden, if you're taking institutions that don't pay property taxes versus business owners that do pay taxes, I would be more inclined to kind of pick like a day that may like a, like a random Tuesday where it's like, hey, come down and go shopping because parking is free, right? Like something, something along those lines. And, you know, and again, it's not my, and I understand that confusion can arise, and I saw something about, about it on KDK as well. But, you know, and I think that if, you know, if a church has a large congregation, it might be a conversation that, you know, that maybe the church can subsidize the parking for their parishioners, right? And then the larger congregations versus, you know, and it would be less of a burden, of course, for smaller congregation. Just a thought on that.
And I think that's where that came from. It wasn't necessarily the churches pushing it, but the, their, the people that go to church are on a fixed income. And so I think that they were upset that they got tickets and they were used to not being ticketed. So I think that's, that's where that had arisen from. But, you know, I, and I'll, like I said, I'll certainly take the heat for trying to go. We were leveraging having the automated enforcement for cameras rather than having people out there. And since we had the cameras, we had the availability to go to 24-hour enforcement in these lots as a way to generate revenue for, you know, the city and, and us in, in, in an area that hadn't been tapped into before because we didn't have the enforcement officers going out to look at it. Knowing that, yes, that it had caused an issue with, with the parishioners that were there. I think the businesses are also trying to come down. But, I mean, I'll even like speak for myself, when I go down to the strip and I go into, you know, the terminal and I patronize a business there, they pay for two-hour parking because I'm going in there. And the businesses actually pay and reimburse for the parking. And then if I go over that, then I pay for it. But it was something that, you know, we, we probably need to look into it a little bit more, but it seems to be causing a lot of issues. But it was one of those things that the, the private lots have always charged on Sunday. They charge every day. There's never anything. So it's like, why are we, why are we not tapping into a revenue source of having these paid, knowing that the streets, the streets are free, but, you know, worrying about the lots because we had the automated enforcement to be able to leverage that, that capability. So, like I said, I'll take the heat for that.
Sure. But I mean, I would just argue, just generally speaking, right, that even the streets should not be free on Sunday, right? Like, I think that as a city, we really need to be moving forward into, and as frustrating as it may be for folks, you know, we all have cars, you know, most of us have cars, 80% of us, but that the public right-of-way is, is public property and your, you know, that, you don't have a right to just store your large piece of metal on the public right-of-way because, you know, and it's so, I just think that that is, that is something that we need to start sort of getting used to as a city, right? Like, our streets are congested. There is so little room. We've talked a lot about residential parking permits, and people are adverse to that. But, you know, people have, and there's ways to prioritize it, right? But, but I think as a city, in terms of revenue, in terms of space, in terms of quality of life, for all road users, we need to really start looking at cars in the same way as you would look at anything else that you just want to, I can't, I can't go, you know, store whatever, my other personal belongings in the middle of the street, right? And so I just think that that's, that's something that we should be a little more clear in, in our approach to just how we deal with our public right-of-ways and who, and who gets to use them and what they're, what they're for, what they're intended for.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. I think we're on the, kind of the same page with our thinking and processing. But thanks for the comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Chair. I was envisioning a big metal pipe on the street. Still mourning for me, I guess. I did want to ask if you could provide counsel, since it has been a topic at the time, whenever we were talking about residency, and then it continues to be a conversation, just not at the, not at the authority, but- the, not the authority, but, well, maybe, I mean, maybe it will be a conversation in the future, but regardless, the conversation about residency always comes up in the city, different department, and different, you know, bureaus, different, you know, there's ASME employees here. So just want to try to understand more of how residency, if you lift it, how it unfolds. Could you provide counsel the numbers of, of the, well, there was two different positions, really, we were focused on was the garage attendants.
Yes.
And then the parking enforcement officers. Those numbers prior to it being lifted, after it being lifted, and then when the contract was finalized, like, I don't know, I guess give it, you know, the numbers after, I don't know.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, whenever, at least whenever the numbers, you know, the, the numbers were updated, or the, I'm sorry, the, the, you know, the income, the hourly rate, right? There's an hourly rate?
Yeah, we just have both.
That you would post? Yeah, after that posting, yeah. Oh, they haven't taken effect yet?
No, not till January.
Oh, really? Okay, so you want, we want to have those, we want to have those numbers yet? Well, at least the.
We'd have the, the.
Preliminary ones. Yeah, and then it'd be good to follow up once the, that contract is signed.
I think we're, we have a tenant agreement on both, it just, they both expired December 31st, won't take effect till January 1st.
Okay, but they are signed, right?
They're not signed, but they're tentatively agreed to. The unions, both membership ratified them.
But they won't go into effect yet?
Yes.
Can you talk about what the increases are?
Uh, yes, I think the, do you have those numbers?
Yeah, they haven't ratified the other one yet, though, so I'd prefer not to talk about that one.
The ASME one was ratified. I think the original contract today, they're at about $20 an hour. And then 2026, they'll jump up to, is it 26? I believe $25 or $26 an hour.
Okay, yeah, I was hearing 26, so thanks for confirming that. Okay, if you could just provide those information, then once the contract is done, I guess, give it a month, then be interested to see what those numbers are after that big increase from 20 to 26. All right, thanks.
We also increased, I don't know what the number is, the, they have a tier level, so the starting wage increased to attract more people also. For the Teamsters.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmen. Is there anybody else at the table or online that has any other questions or comments? Seeing that there is none, I want to thank the Parking Authority staff, Director Honorado, and, and your staff for being here today and for your presentation, answering our questions, and thank you for your service on behalf of the people of the city, and have a wonderful holiday season.
You too, thank you, and happy holidays to all the council members. Thank you for your support throughout the year.
Thank you, thank you. Now I'd like to invite those from the Equipment Leasing Authority to join us at the table, and while they are joining us at the table, I will ask our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give a brief overview of the authority.
Thank you, Councilman. The Equipment Leasing Authority was incorporated in 1980 to serve as a financing mechanism enabling the city of Pittsburgh to make major equipment purchases, primarily vehicles. The ELA would issue bonds, buy vehicles, hold titles of those vehicles, and lease them to the city. The lease payments amortize the bonds. Since its incorporation, the ELA has continued its role as the city's central player in fleet acquisition, maintenance, repair, and replacement. The ELA is composed of five members, three appointed by the mayor and two appointed by council president. Currently, Councilman Coghill and myself reside on the ELA board. And I've also included the acquisition plan that has been approved through the operating capital budgets. This is actually a super useful tool that, I'll give a shout out to Chief Financial Officer Patrick for including it. It's towards the end of the capital budget, but this shows all of the vehicles that are included in each of the different budgets that you can see there. It totals 50 vehicles and just over $10 million. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. And now for the authority, I'd like the active representatives from the Equipment Leasing Authority to introduce themselves, their titles, and then feel free to begin the presentation after introductions.
So I'm actually going to introduce myself again as the ELA Board Treasurer, Peter McDevitt.
I'm the Chair, I'm Lisa Frank. Jennifer Rosenger, Chief Procurement Officer, also handle fleet.
Furman Maurice, Senior Manager of Fleet Services.
Chris Hornstein, Vice Chair of the ELA.
And thank you, and feel free to begin your presentation.
Okay. As mentioned, the capital plan includes 50 vehicles selected for replacement in the year 2026. These vehicles are, or have been selected because they are basically the worst of the worst. Financially, they are past that point of financial responsibility here. These units were selected using multiple criteria such as downtime, five-year costs. What we've seen by examining those five-year costs is that when vehicles hit a certain age, the cost to maintain and repair rises drastically. The plan you see before you is basically to stop the bleeding of the continued financial responsibility of the city as far as these vehicles.
Is there any others from the authority that I would like to share? And also want to note for the record that Leishmit, Director of Public Safety, has joined us as well. And we're joined by, again, we're joined by council members, Barb Warwick, Erica Schausberger, Bobby Wilson, and, and Councilman Charlin and Councilwoman Gross are also joining us online.
I can add a little bit as a member of the ELA and then also the director that has probably the largest fleet next to Chris and DPW, you know, something, and I have brought my chiefs here to speak on their own behalf, if you wish to talk to any of them, but, you know, we've said it for quite some time, the ELA can only fund what it's given. And there's always a much, much higher demand for vehicles than what the ELA is giving funding for. And I think working with Furman and the rest of the fleet team, we have developed some future plans and some better ways to, as Furman put it, stop the bleed, but we really need some major investment to get it even to that point that we're not on life support, which is kind of where we are now, so. I don't know if anybody else has anything, but that's.
Probably saying a version of the things that people have already said, but I think the, the real, I think the real purpose, in addition to the financial responsibility, this is to have the vehicles available to our staff that they need to have available to be able to do the work that our residents expect to be done. And, and I think over the years that I've been part of the ELA, we have presented variously to council and sometimes at a RAD meeting, or sometimes anywhere we have an opportunity to talk about the fleet, what a comprehensive plan looks like to get our fleet to a state where, using all of the metrics that Furman has mentioned, what's the correct lifespan of a, of a vehicle, maybe so that we sell it before it has reached, you know, it's before it's on its deathbed or so on. Using all of that information to be able to say, look, if we were going to adopt a plan that might, over the course of five or seven years, get us to a place where we were managing the fleet asset appropriately, that looks like something along the lines of $20 million a year, a little up, a little down, depending on when this fire truck got bought, or that something or got bought. But on average, Furman, that's correct, right? Something like that. And I know Furman also supplied us with a couple of scenarios for shorter-term fleet sort of reparation investments that said, you know, if we wanted to get 50% of the way towards, to a good, you know, to, down the road to a properly managed and financed fleet, we would do this, or if we wanted to take, you know, six years to do it, we might do this. And so I don't think, to Director Schmidt's point, I don't think we lack for an understanding of our fleet, where it is, and I really want to credit Furman with that. He can tell you every vehicle we have, when it was bought, how many times it's been repaired, what ideally we would, when ideally we would dump it if we weren't hanging on to it because we don't have anything else. I think we understand the asset, and I think we understand the level of investment that's needed, the asset. And the last thing that I'll just say is, I think we have done some work that was, you know, needed to, given, given how much money, we, we can't afford to make mistakes. If we already don't have enough money, we do not want to be making mistakes. We do not want to be buying the wrong things at the wrong time. We do not want to be investing in things that it turns out it doesn't work. And so we took paying, some of them formal, we changed the bylaws of the ELA, some of them a little less formal, to make sure that every single purchase we're making is being run through the asset management plan rather than the grants office in conjunction with a director saying, hey, let's try this, or, you know, staff kind of lobbying here and there for the things they need, because we have made some costly mistakes that way. So I think, I think at this point, the reason people are talking about money is because I think the, the current ELA, you know, thanks to its members and to Furman and Jen and others, have really straightened out our understanding of the asset and have straightened out our own internal operations to prevent us from making costly mistakes. We really are just talking about getting with the plan.
I'll, I'll add to that, too. Councils discussed yesterday an amendment, and it's also important to clarify that the ELA does not manage the maintenance of the vehicles, that is wholly on the city. The ELA does the purchasing of the vehicles and holding of the titles of the vehicles. They don't do anything with the maintenance that is on the city's team to manage that. But the city did have to increase the contract for fleet maintenance, and that is 100% because our fleet is so old and we have underfunded it. And because of that, we've had to think of creative ways to find funding, and to a point that Councilwoman Gross has made multiple times at this table. We, we chase grants and then we have to buy very specific vehicles, similar to what Chief Frank was just saying, that may not suit our needs, so we're getting vehicles that might be too big for our streets because they were tied to a specific grant that was for a specific purpose. So now we have big CNG trucks that we need to use throughout the city because we didn't have enough pay-go funds to, to buy the vehicles that we needed. And really, the only way to get to the point where we have the fleet that we need is an increase in pay-go dollars in the capital budget. There's no point in having all of these employees if they do not have the tools to do the jobs. And the only way to do that is to have an increased transfer of operating dollars to the capital budget. And the only way to do that is to either significantly reduce operation dollars, which means cutting services, or finding additional revenues that can be used unencumbered to buy the, the equipment that we need to do the jobs.
And, uh, somebody stopped us when they won't ask questions. But, and I think, I think we have done some work there. We have, you know, are now purchasing the correct vehicles through the RAD budget. We, you know, we have found, I think, part of what the, the chart that, or the appendix in the budget shows you is that, thank you, that folks have, have really been doing a good job thinking about funding streams.
Yeah.
That we can combine to contribute to the, to the budget for the fleet that allow us to purchase the vehicles that we, that we need. And, you know, hats off to Chris, who's been working on that, and, you know, all of the departments have been working on that, and I think we've.
Yeah.
Made some progress there.
And a lot of credit to, to, to Patrick Cornell and the rest of OMB to find creative ways to use what funding we do have. $10 million is not nothing, but it's also not enough.
Do we have any other comments from the panelists, or we can, we can open up for questions if there's nothing addition? Okay, I'll start with Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Just bring up some of my questions that I had here, one second. Overall, I appreciate all the work that you all do, and I was, listened to your comments, Chief, and I want to say that council has been updated as well, I think in past years, I mean, forever, since I've been here, so it's not, you know, I'm not sure what, what happened prior to when I got here in 2020, but, um, I know that we were always, I've always felt in the dark about, until we got to this place here, in the dark about the fleet. So, you know, the recent report that we worked on was helpful for council to get our bearings on, at least for me, it was super helpful to understand, you know, at least the amount of vehicles, just to actually see it line by line, how many are past their lifespan, you know, to understand that threshold, why we would, you know, hold the line there on that calculation as which ones were past the, past the lifeline. So, yeah, I appreciate all the work that went into that report, and, you know, there's continued conversation about how bad the fleet is, and I know that keeps coming up, and people speak to it, so it's just a challenging thing. And I don't think we're gonna, it's something we're out to work on each year, and hopefully this year, you know, I'm not sure exactly how this all plays out right now, and I'm not sure any of us do on this side of the table, but we're currently working on it. And, you know, would be great, obviously, to, to get more into this this year. Not sure how that actually happens yet, but there are some, some ideas floating around. I did have some specific questions, and they pertain to, I'll start with street sweepers. So this, this line item here for street sweeper lease year 1 of 5, so can you confirm that this is something that we're re-implementing, like a, from my understanding, we, we did a leasing program at one point, and then we went back and, and started purchasing them?
We, we had leased them in the past, like, maybe 10 years ago, that was something, whenever I first started at the city in like 2016, that was something that I worked on with Slim Forest, I used to, to lease them and used, I think we used, the funding source, I think was the, the auction proceeds that the ELA would get for selling off old retired vehicles. But this is, this is something that was just discussed yesterday at council to enter into lease agreement? So the, this is, that's a, that's a fresh topic, to, to get more leased street sweepers. And this also has maintenance built into the, the lease contract, so hopefully that will help alleviate how many trucks are down.
Okay, apologize, maybe I missed that conversation about the street sweepers and.
Yeah, and also just wanted to note that the street sweeper maintenance is done by heavy equipment, so by leasing them and having the maintenance included, that takes a big load off of heavy equipment who are already short on mechanics, right, Chris?
Yes.
So this will help us keep them, keep them moving and, and take the load off of heavy equipment for that maintenance.
Yeah, that was part of my, that was going to be one of my questions with the street sweeper leases, is that because, you know, the maintenance part of it is just so difficult, and, you know, is that, is that even something that we can get Transdev to, to, to fix? Like, I would, I mean, it kind of brings up a, a topic that I'm wondering is, you know, how much, how much of our fleet, like, the types of vehicles that we have, like this rack packer thing, like, and the, these different vehicles that have, you know, they're kind of specialized vehicles, and, well, a lot of them, you know, where you go from a fire truck to an ambulance are all specialized, but is there certain ones that Transdev's like, look, we can only do minimal work here, we can't do anything else, and it just makes sense just to lease it out? Because the, because if we lease, does that mean that the per, the company we lease it off, we can just send it back to them and they can make the, the harder repairs that Transdev couldn't do? Sorry, I'm not that well-versed in the subject, I'm trying to get more of an understanding.
In this case, yes, but not all leases would, would have a maintenance package. You know, it would probably be case by case to see the type of vehicle, you know, and what was available. But I think the main idea here is every five years, we'll get five new ones, and we'll always have good current.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. The idea here is. The idea here is that we'll get five new ones every five years and we'll always have a good, healthy sweeper fleet. Obviously there, there's issues in that. Chris can probably speak more to, you know, the maintenance issues and stuff like that. But the idea here is to keep, keep it in an operating thing with the liquid tool, Liquid Fuels Trust Fund. I believe, is that, that's the funding source for this, right?
Correct.
Am I correct?
To help answer some of those questions, Councilman. The, is a lease to buy, or a lease to own, if you will. So we have the option at the end of the five-year term to purchase the vehicles if we so desire. It does come with a maintenance package. What we found right now with our current fleet, because it's older and because it's aged, the availability of parts is not there. So we have a long lead time for parts on a piece of equipment that, you know, is very active, particularly in the warmer months and can't be safely operated without. So the maintenance package, we identified as being critical. I think the added benefit of the maintenance package in this case is since we're leasing it, you know, from the manufacturer, you know, they have a vested interest in making sure that the vehicle is operational and is good working order. That protects their investment.
Are they new vehicles?
Yes.
Oh, they're new, okay.
They're new, yes. So.
I'm not used to seeing a new.
Right, right. So, you know, we feel like in this case, because, because it is a specialty piece of equipment, it is unique among the fleet, there are 10 of them, that it was a good case model to explore, ensuring the maximum amount of availability, best maintenance practice, kind of reducing some of the burdened problems for both heavy equipment and TransDev. Just to be clear, you know, TransDev would do some maintenance on the vehicle, on the, on the street themselves. It's a little bit more complex. Most of it was done by heavy equipment. But for things related to the chassis and the vehicles, would have went to TransDev for brakes, engine, that type of things. Like the things that you would normally think your garage would be able to fix. So that's the other, that's the other portion of it. Reducing that complexity will allow us to improve its reliability.
Okay. All right, thanks for answering that. And then in terms of leasing, I also see that we're on our sixth and third year of an apparatus lease. Is that the fire? Okay, because I did some questions about fire. So how many vehicles, I'm sorry, how many, you refer to fire as an apparatus? I mean, how many fire vehicles are past their, their lifespan for recommended service?
80% probably, would you say Lee?
I haven't currently calculated at 64% of fire fleet.
Meaning that we're spending more on maintenance?
Yes.
Just remind me again, like it's.
Yes, we spend more maintenance for vehicles that are, that have exceeded their life cycle expectation.
Okay, that's 64%.
63.48.
Yeah, okay. And then, how, how long would it take to order a new one?
Lead times have increased over the past few years. You are max four years for ladder or specialty apparatus.
Four years out?
Oh, yes.
So we, like from the time you.
So if we buy it today, we won't see it for four years.
Yeah, but by the time you put the order in, or by the time you, like, figure out which fire apparatus you're buying?
By the time you put the order in. By the time you put the order in.
If we order it today, it's minimum three years, if not four.
Okay.
Depending on if it's a ladder, a pumper, an aerial.
Yeah, and that, I'm sorry, but whenever we look at the fleet, that's, as Furman states, 64 is what we're doing right now. But when we think about the fact that four years from now, like even if I ordered 10 engines right now, I'm waiting four years to get those, that 64% is very quickly going to get up to 80 or 90 or.
It's not going to get better.
Yeah, so tho, those are things that we, I think in the past, haven't always thought through was lead time. It also was not as impactful as it is now because it was a two-year lead time. But even then, that's something to think through is, is better planning on, which I know Furman has done a good job with that. But with, with all, you know, fire and EMS specifically, police fleets, their regular vehicles are a little different because they're paid out of operating, but their specialty vehicles are in the same boat. That we don't think through replacement of those vehicles or haven't historically thought through replacement of the vehicles until they were really needed to be replaced. EMS, I think, is 90% of those vehicles are beyond what, what normal emergency services would consider a serviceable fleet. And fires not much better, especially when you factor in the, the lead time on orders.
Just on the, on the question of timing, I mean, the, the utility, I think, of the, of the, you know, big plans that show you how you would do it if you would do it, you know, perfectly, is to make sure that you're not trying to buy half your fire fleet all in the same year and to, you know, sort of level out the, the investment. So it's not like, whoa, we got to do six fire trucks this year. But then this year, luckily, we only have to do, you know, two F-150s. It's to, it's to actually take into account the lifespans so that, so that our investment could become sort of regularized. We can just anticipate we're going to need roughly X million each year because we've staggered the purchasing so that vehicles come due, so to speak, at the right time. We're not in a position to do that right now.
Do you feel like you're on a good path on ordering so that we don't, so we're not at risk at, you're shaking your head now?
No, no. We need 20 million a year to be on that path. And like, we're already behind.
Wait, wait, 20 million for ELA, but what about for?
For, I mean, well, that's the thing, like, if we were in a good place, we would need 20 million a year. We are in a bad place and we're getting 10 million. We are very far behind on everything.
Yeah. So what does it look like continuing to get on this path for, I'm just picking on fire here? Like, I feel like I've mentioned.
We're going to have SUVs in fire stations, that's where we're going to be.
What's that?
We're just going to have SUVs in fire stations instead of fire apparatuses.
Or I guess in the past, we've borrowed.
We've, we've bought used ones from San Diego and other places that kind of help us out for six months or a year.
Okay. And then, and then with these, yeah, kind of take away all my questions after that, you know?
And you, you, and when you look at the list, you can note that there's no fire apparatus on this plan for this year at all.
Except for the lease.
Yeah.
Well, but those are ones we already have.
Yeah, but it's already bought. Yeah, so what, so why is that?
Because we don't have enough money.
But like, you know, would there be, I mean, just like EMS, I'm not saying that fire, whatever, for all emergency vehicles, but let's just pick on, you know, like, looking at fire, like is there, I don't know, if you had the, like, is there a strategy here to make sure that, like, these are all needed? And we don't need to, you know, take five of them out so that we put a fire truck here?
So like, I mean, Furman has done a really good job of kind of prioritizing, like, what is, what is, like, every, almost everything is past the life cycle, but what is the furthest? And what is the biggest issues? And at this point, EMS and Public Works are at the top of that list. That's not to say that fire isn't also in terrible shape. But then you have to look at the funding sources that we have available. And that's why I was saying, like, you need pay-go so that you can do whatever you need to do. But we don't have enough pay-go. So we are able to use parks tax money to fund DPW. We have a little bit more in the general fund that can go towards ambulances because of the additional Medicaid revenue that we brought in, but that needs to go towards EMS.
How much is the fire truck?
Easily a million dollars.
I mean, there's different ones.
For a pumper, for, for.
For a pumper. Aerials, probably 1.5.
Yeah, it's close to 2 million.
Closer to 1.8, I think.
Like buy another one.
Okay, and then I did have one specific question, which I had to learn what it was. But I've heard that the foam tenders are, have really never been commissioned. Apparently it's something that you tow, the fire company can tow, so that.
Yeah.
They can bring the foam to the scene.
Correct. We have two that, by previous fire staff were poorly specced and there are safety concerns on using them. They work, but they, they are, they need some repairs and some changes to the setup so they can drive more safely, folks can get up and down more safely. I can't remember off the top of my head, but there's like some sort of heater or something that comes right at the people as they're walking up, you know, that needs moved. I think there needs, the weight of where the foam sits is, is kind of improperly balanced. Chief Kukila could probably speak in more detail. Probably two or three years since we went and looked at them. Do they function? Yes, but if we have to deploy them, you know, it's, it's not the safest. They're not the safest, but we would have to, you know, if we had to use them, we could. But again, we are putting our employees in danger.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on this because I'm curious on, like, other situations like this where we've bought something and then we're unable to use it. I mean, like, this happened like right when we bought it, it wasn't usable?
So there's, the trailers have existed for a while, that was a Region 13 asset. The trucks were purchased a few years ago. And Chief Cookie that could give you more details for sure. But basically there, there's some issues when the foam is on the vehicle, the vehicle's a little too weighted too high because of the height of the vehicle, the way they respect. We have some solutions, but then there's other reasons beyond that for the foam. The, the foam that we have used historically, that all fire departments used, is no longer considered safe environmentally because of PFOS. So we have had, over the past couple of years, had to work towards replacing all of our foam and paying to dispose of the hazardous foam. So there's, there's a lot of things that are coming to play there, which I mean, we probably could get into separately and have a separate conversation.
Yeah, I'm familiar with this, I mean, actually at Council, we just, we authorized the non.
Right, the non, whatever it's called, but yeah, the non-hazard foam. But it needs to use more. Fortunately, we don't use the foam all that often, but what's that?
Any type of foam can go in this trailer though, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's not a trailer though, these are trucks.
Oh, you can drive it?
Yes. The prior, the prior apparatus we have, we still have, they're still in service, were trailers.
Okay.
And then we also had a large foam truck that is also, it's the newer vehicles.
So what happens if we need to, you know, use that?
We still have the ability, we have a few different options. It's just the newer trucks that they were developing for future have not been fully put in service yet.
Okay. All right, thanks. I've been talking long enough and letting others talk, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Schasberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to thank Furman, you for providing all the information that you have in the past to us. You've been really helpful in, in helping us understand truly where we are and where we could be and painting a vision of the future that, that could be, should we find, you know, appropriate funds, sufficient funds. So thank you for the past presentations that you've delivered and all the work that you all do as well. This is not, not easy work. I also wanted to focus in on our emergency vehicles, fire and EMS. And Councilman Wilson asked some of the questions I had. I guess you have reminded, you have told us this before, but I believe, do we have calculated the additional cost that the city has paid due to the delaying or due to our aging fleet? Like, is there, is there a number in dollars, in a dollar amount that you have as part of that presentation that you?
As far as maintenance or?
Yeah, because of maintenance. Or something that approaches answering that question?
I can find that number for you.
Okay, okay, that would be, that would be helpful.
I can do that.
Yeah. And do we know the exact state of, again, focusing on EMS and fire, I just, those are our emergency vehicles. All of our vehicles are so important for various reasons. That said, like, in the worst-case scenario, we could halt all street sweeping for a period of years and probably be okay. We can't halt responding to emergencies and having the appropriate vehicles to do that. So I, that's why I'm focusing in on our emergency vehicles. Do you have in front of you, does anyone have the numbers that, that show the number of vehicles in those two categories, fire and EMS, that are past, that are past their point of?
Useful life cycle?
Useful life cycle, thank you. This is, these are the words that would come to me if I were on the ELA, that we're still using right now.
Currently EMS and fire over life cycle units are 45%. So 45% across both fleets are over life cycle.
Do you have it broken down by fleet, by?
Yeah. Kind of, yes.
For, for what it's worth, the, I would say the assessment tool that Furman has developed for us is, is even a little more refined than that. It, it bakes in age, it bakes in repair record, it bakes in mileage, it bakes in, you know, it's, it's downtime score, it bakes in the risk of not having it available. And I think we've got every vehicle the city owns, you know, kind of ranked in that way. So, you know, you can look directly at the predicted, like, industry standard life cycle. You can also look at the, I don't know, particular medical histories of our own vehicles and where that puts them in our, you know, sense of, of where are they next on the list for needing to be replaced, including the risk of not having them available. Where you would typically see public safety vehicles with a higher risk assessment than, say, the bus for the senior center.
Great, so that's helpful. So it's like, it's like weighted because of the risk, not just the age of the vehicle, not just the cost of repair, but like the risk to the public.
And specifically in these emergency vehicles, fire apparatus and ambulances, engine hours is a big critical primary factor. They may not be as old, but the hour, or have as much mileage, but the hours on them, because when a fire truck is responding to, it's running the entire time. So if it's there for six hours, it's on, you know, and it's, we're using it. So that, that wears those down too. Ambulances, obviously, they're running, all the equipment has to run, the, you know, the oxygen and everything in those vehicles. You know, they are, they are running the entire time they are at a call.
That makes sense.
Yes, with specifics.
Yeah.
EMS fleet, 78 vehicles, 42% over life cycle. Fire, currently 114 vehicles, 48% over life cycle.
42 and 48%, averaging 45, okay. And, you know, if we were to find additional funds, I assume that you have, like, let's just say it was like a doubling of the amount of additional $10 million. I assume that you would have at the ready, the exact, like, next list ready to go, it's ready. And where do our public safety vehicles fall kind of in that list?
EMS is at the top, aren't they?
Yeah, EMS scored very highly.
Yeah.
With fire right behind.
But for like a next.
Yes. Yes, they were included in the submission, as you well know, capital is limited, so the line had to be drawn somewhere.
Sure, I'm speaking in a fictional world where, maybe not fictional.
Magically, the bank opened up.
Yeah, we, we asked Furman to prepare, what would you do if the bottom line was, I think, 8 million? What would you do if the bottom line was 12 million? What would you do? And then we had the members of the ELA and directors look at that. So the, I think the very short answer to your question is, is it at the ready? It's at the ready.
I don't want to say too much. Councilmembers are, are in talks right now with some, you know, shifting of various funds, funding streams. And if there was ever a time when our nonprofits, our largest nonprofits, need to step up and fund the city, if we were able to get an agreement with them, vehicles are so essential that I would, I would, I would hope that that would be a big part of a pilot agreement with our largest nonprofits. And I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Warwick, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. So just for.
Yeah, thank you. So just for, and I know we've talked about, but just to explain. Again. And maybe in two scenarios, sort of I'll call a regular vehicle, right, like a standard pickup truck, yes, it'd be something like that. Versus a specialty vehicle like a fire truck or whatever. What? What is the cost difference over the? I'm trying to get the to really understand the cost difference between lease versus buy. Right? So if you're leasing for seven years with a, you know, with a package for service. Versus buying a vehicle that would that you would own and fix yourself for. You know, maybe twice as long as the lease. Is that something that we?
I don't have that readily available, but I can work on it.
I'm, yeah, we've that's something that's been discussed for years since I was in O M B, the idea of like leasing all of our non-specialty fleet. But I don't we don't have that those figures, what it would look like, I don't think.
I'm looking at Chris, who I think has given a lot of thought to to what kinds of things might make sense to lease versus, you know, including the. Cost of them. I just know you've done a lot of thinking about that for DPW.
Yeah, I think. Before you can adequately answer that question, I think the first question you have to ask is what is the requirement here? What is the need? I'm not convinced that like, like Peter mentioned earlier, that the city's responsibility is for maintenance. You know, the ELA's board is to is to purchase the vehicles. And so often we look at our fleet and we say, these are all the vehicles that we have, and this is our funding need, but we've not yet actually taken the step. To say, what is our actual requirement here for this vehicle performing work? Like, what is its work? Why is this required? What is driving the need for this particular vehicle? There are certain vehicles that we have. That are absolutely essential that we need. That don't get operated very often for a variety of reasons. Are there ways that we can look into work to. Maximize our potential in different ways? That hasn't been done yet. Needs to be done. Department to have to do that work. I've tasked my team to begin that conversation internally. That helps answer the question of what's the what's the best value proposition lease versus. Ownership. In talking with other surrounding municipalities for commonly. Vehicles where you have a high volume of ownership for so for public works, that would be like one ton dump. Would be one of my classic example. There's probably a really good case model there to say it would be. Financially in the city's best interest to lease versus own. You probably get a very favorable term from the manufacturer. And you would get comparable maintenance. Being performed. You know, it's an analysis that kind of has to be done. It's. Going through that procurement process is, I think, sometimes a little bit tricky. But it's certainly a worthwhile exercise. The way I look at it is where it makes the best. From my perspective, where it makes the best cost. Sense and reliability sense so that the vehicle is always available is when you have either a high volume of. A commonly desired vehicle in the market. For us, that would be like a one ton in public works. Or. Conversely, highly specialized vehicle that only a few partners would want like a like a street sweeper.
Well, so. Okay, so I mean, so I'm just looking at it here like with fire. So let's just take one of these fire, you know, apparatuses. So. You got like a, we'll just say five fifty K. For the year, is that the is that the cost per year for the lease?
Yep.
So the cost per year is five fifty over seven years is, sorry, math. Is. Three point eight five.
Million, yeah.
Million. Over. Three point eight five million total. Versus one million. Plus repairs. Do and do we have a rough idea of what the, I mean, ballpark of like the lifetime of repairs on?
Repairs are on us for this, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, the the fire apparatuses, the city is responsible for the maintenance.
Oh, so we're we're still repairing the.
Yes.
Yes.
This is the way we were so far behind on fire apparatuses that this was one of the the tricks that we used to get a whole bunch at once. But then you can see there's no more in here in this plan. So this is the kind of thing we need to get away from buying a whole bunch at once.
But we're paying almost four times as much then per vehicle for by leasing, no?
No, that's for multiple vehicles.
Yeah.
That's not just one vehicle.
And this was also six years ago when they were significantly cheaper.
So, okay, so I and we don't need to do the math at the table, but this feels like math that we should know.
Yeah.
Right? Or at least it would be helpful for me for just to kind of get an idea, right? Like, so this like lease versus. So how many how many fire trucks? I mean, how many? How many trucks do we have on this lease?
Four.
Four total for the two line items?
Five, five.
Pumper and then the truck. So five total.
Five total. So then. This three point eight five million. Sorry, I'm gonna do a little more more math divided by five.
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand each per, but like that's also combining and like an engine is a lot cheaper than an a ladder truck, so.
Okay, but I mean, but this seems like relevant, right?
So it does, yeah. I mean, it's.
A million to buy one, but then what's the life expectancy? I mean.
You also have to consider that this was six years ago, whenever they cost like they exploded in price through the pandemic.
Okay, I mean, I'm not I'm not trying to like. You know.
I think it's very.
I'm just saying overall.
Yes.
It would be help at least for for to kind of understand. You know, on all vehicle types, like when does because we're paying so much money to repair vehicles, right?
Yes.
Like so much money that.
And and the only the only thought that I have about that is that, you know, and again, credit to to Furman and, you know, people who. Worked on this is that you do sort of have to look at the whole fleet. Because the question of availability really matters when you've got a fire truck that's going to take four years to get into the pipeline. So. You know, knowing those trade offs per vehicle type is part of what we have to understand, but we also have to understand. The, you know, sort of cash flows and funding sources and so on to 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 operate an entire fleet. And and I think what Pete's pointing to is that we sometimes get a little backed into. Perhaps not the best deal on a per vehicle type because. You know, what's happening to a fire truck isn't just about a fire truck. It's also about what's happening to. The ambulances or it's about what's happening, you know, the the. It is again, I mean, this is really just a plug for the work that Furman has done, which is to try to put, you know. Time to availability into those equations and to try to so we've got this much money. We've got this fleet. How do we arrange it to to make the best things happen that we can make happen? And then he's got the ideal plan, which would say, where would you sink money to get us into a position? Where the vehicle by vehicle comparisons you're making would be the only things that we would have to think about.
And if I could just for the for those specific five fire apparatus. That is a municipal. Government, it's a lease agreement, which gives us an option to purchase, buy those vehicles for a dollar at the end of the lease. We are throughout that lease period, we are paying the full value of those vehicles. It's not necessarily saving us money. It's also it's it's not much different than a car loan. A regular person would take out. It's just they call it a lease because of it being with the municipality or a nonprofit. But we are still paying all maintenance, all costs. It just.
Just like a.
Plus a.
It's like your car note, right, right, right.
It's basically a car loan, yeah.
It's like car note, okay.
It's very different than the lease that Director Hornstein is proposing for other things that would. Which you can do that with. Smaller vehicles. You can't do that with a custom apparatus.
Yeah, it might be a good solution like for the smaller duty DPW trucks or like all of our PLI sedans, maybe. It would be a good solution for that because that is that is, I mean, I don't. We don't have any from PLI here, I think, I don't think, but they will tell you they need more vehicles. Like if they're if we expect inspectors to be out there on a day to day basis, they need more vehicles. That they can count on working.
So and I do have a question just about this. So I also see here that we've got twenty police SUVs on here for like. One point three seven million. If I recall and I I don't remember, I don't remember where I but. And I maybe it was ARPA funds or something, but there was and maybe it was in one of these meetings. Where we bought a ton of police vehicles at one point, did we not? Like some three hundred and seventy some police, is that?
That's a little high.
Maybe that's high. I just remember seeing some number where I was like, my wow, we really like dumped a ton of money into police vehicles.
There were sixty recently implemented, but those were purchased over years and Ford kept canceling and pushing our orders.
Yeah, that was more just like a like.
So they kind of they came at once, but they weren't ordered all at once.
Yeah, we may have like doubled up the funding one year because I think Ford straight up canceled the order that we had placed. So like one year we didn't get any and then we got double the amount the following year.
Yeah, the Ford didn't cancel, I think, twice. Two years in a row, they canceled what we ordered. I'll also note, police patrol and regular SUVs are not in the ELA budget. They are in public safety admin's operating budget because they don't last the the normal five year span.
They're not in the capital budget. They are in the ELA's budget, but it comes from the capital side or from the operating side, not in the capital because they are used. Their lifespan is much shorter. It has to last five years to be considered a capitalized asset. They don't last five years.
Yeah, and it's a transfer that happens. It's.
So so what are these these twenty SUVs? I'm just because we're obviously like, you know, and I have. I'll dig into other things. So so what are these twenty SUVs for?
Are those patrols?
I would assume they're.
Yeah, it'd be a combination of patrols or canines or unmarked, depending on the need, but.
Okay, so like.
Right, but as. Mr. McDevitt stated, that's not out of the capital. Line items that are given to the ELA. That is.
Public safety admin operating.
Right, it's an operating transfer that happens between public safety admin. I think it's one point three million.
Yep.
That gets transferred to the ELA to purchase those. Vehicles.
So. And I also want to ask you, just with the ordering. What is the what is the process for? Was I say, what's the time? What's the time difference between like the time that we approve the money? To like getting the order? And I know it's different for getting the vehicle ultimately, like that depends on, but but what's the process for that?
I mean, I think it depends on the type of vehicle. You know, if it's a sedan or an interceptor or whatever, we put them out to bid. We take, you know, to the dealers, we take the lowest bid for the vehicles and we place an order. But if it's a specialty vehicle like a fire truck and all that, we go through a complete RFP process because they're so specialized. So that takes a lot longer.
Ideally, though, so at this point, we see what has been improved in the preliminary budget. Council can change that by maybe adding more. But maybe taking some away. But at this point, we should know. What is in line to be purchased and the fleet team can't actually issue those purchase orders until the cooperative agreement between the ELA and the city is processed. And that is something that is done at as soon as possible, as soon as the budget is approved and. Is implemented next year. You'll see that in late January, early February. And so at this point, hopefully, we started. Confirming all the specs for all those vehicles that are on the plan. So as soon as that cooperation agreement. Is signed, we can start putting out purchase orders and RFPs for all those vehicles. Because the fleet's in such bad shape, we cannot waste any time in trying to replace it.
And. So we keep hearing this a lot, like specialty vehicles and and. What? Why? Why do we need specialty vehicle? I mean, like, what's different between a fire truck in Pittsburgh and a fire truck in Cleveland? Or a fire truck in, I don't know, some other city that that makes us need these like super specific vehicles?
So. Pretty much all fire trucks are considered specialty. There's not many that don't spec the trucks based on. Their own needs. There are a few that you can get kind of a stock, but everybody customizes them to a point. Due to our terrain and narrow streets, as well as some of our extremely old buildings. We have to make sure the apparatus will fit in the buildings. Everything we do is custom EMS, even their. The regular ambulances that the medics, the ALS trucks are also built to a spec. Other specialty vehicles are things like the foam tenders. The rescue trucks. Police have the bomb squad unit, the canine vehicle that transports a number of canines. We have a lot of. Vehicles that aren't, you can't just get off the shelf. You buy a chassis. But then everything that goes on that chassis is built kind of custom.
So so for like the fire trucks and the ambulances, they don't that doesn't come, there's not just like a standard, like everything is built to order, no matter, that's just how it's ordered.
Yeah, you can't ambulances you can buy in like our smaller ones that we use for BLS and we use for. Special events aren't as custom. They're a little more off the shelf, so to speak, or, you know, off the lot. But they're still built to. Ambulance and fire manufacturers don't build, you know, a hundred fire trucks or a hundred ambulances that are all exactly the same. They're they build them as they're ordered. So then you always have the opportunity to build and make some adjustments to them. EMS specifically, this last round, we did put some new specs out. And change some of that with them that the new ambulances are about a hundred thousand dollars less than the old ones were. It's a different manufacturer and then we got rid of some of the custom specs. Fire, again, Chief Kukila or others that are on the fire committee. Could go over how some of the things they find when you buy the commercial off the shelf. Or whatever you want to call it, a stock. So to speak, stock fire truck, the longevity of that truck typically doesn't outweigh. The additional things that we add around things that'll prevent rust, things that will. Reduce the need for, you know, one of our fire stations, for example, when they pull in and out. They pull in and out of the apron and it's on a hill. So what we've noticed is there's a lot more flex that happens every time that truck goes in and out of that station. Versus, you know, a fire truck in the suburbs that. Wouldn't hit the volume and also wouldn't necessarily be on that. So there's a lot of things that factor into what we do. With the fire trucks and ambulances that. Require us to spec them. And then we also want to make sure that things are standardized. So the operators know where that piece of equipment is on every, you know, whether you're at truck eighteen or truck eight.
Right.
You know, that piece of equipment is in that compartment. So we want to make sure all of our trucks are the same. And with the the age of the vehicle fleet, you know, you have a brand new truck or a twenty five year old truck. Can make a big difference.
So I guess and my my last question, and this is really. Hopefully rhetorical, we'll see, but. Just something for for council members to think about. Is, you know. Well, I should ask. Would we be in less of a like a less dire situation if you had, say, ten million dollars more for twenty twenty six? Like double what you have here in terms of budget? Would that be helpful?
Very much so, yes.
You think so?
Yes, please.
And, you know, we obviously need these vehicles to like perform our basic services. So I just kind of wonder like for the public, you know. If it would be worth. In order for us to do this, to like be sure that our ambulances can respond, to be sure that, you know. Potholes can get filled and just sort of like the basic like, you know. If it would be worth. Like not having any pools be open? Or if it would be worth. Only getting our garbage picked up, maybe like every cup two weeks?
I mean, with the state of our refuse fleet, we might be headed towards that anyways without additional investment. But yeah, I mean, you're talking about basic city, certainly like. We've talked a lot. But yeah, I mean, you're talking about basic city, so like, we've talked a lot about fire and E M S and for good reason because without competent fleets, you're talking about people's lives. But also, like, we just had a snow event and like, I don't know how many times Chris has had to come to this table and answer the same questions. And it's the same answer every single time. He does not have the resources, and that means he does not have the fleet. And that's also people's lives.
Right, but but what I'm asking is, because this is like critical, this is like public safety issue in many cases, right? This fleet situation is a public safety issue. But what I would ask for the public is, is it worth like just not doing, I don't know, like not doing playgrounds or just, you know, stopping all our rec center programming?
I understand.
Worth, you know?
Which core service is worth more?
Well, yeah, I mean, is it worth, you know, is it worth like cutting our assistance for you know, low income families like rent relief and things like that? Is it worth cutting them out? Is it worth? You know, what's it worth? What's it worth to the to the people of Pittsburgh? Or for your average Pittsburgher, is it worth being able to do all of these things, to have a safe fleet that is effective or at least get closer to that? To have our wonderful rec center programming, to have our free summer camps, to have our pools that are free for kids every, you know, to have beautiful parks, to have all all the great stuff that 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 make our city great? Is that worth for your average Pittsburgher, right? Like an extra maybe hundred and eighty, two hundred dollars a year? Is it worth that? And that's really a question, I think, for the public. And I I think it's a question for for our council members. So that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Charlin, if you're still with us. Okay, Councilwoman Gross, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm gonna hold my questions. I I think other members covered like every checkbox I had. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. My my first question is around, you know, this idea of of twenty million annually. Obviously, you know, if, you know, we had a magic wand and was able to, you know, provide that twenty million dollars this year, obviously, that wouldn't like solve all the the issues. Like, how many, you know, years in succession annually would that twenty million dollars need would be needed to actually get out of the hole?
So I guess it would that's, again, that's the baseline if we were in a good position. So we're not in a good position, so like, and again, that's just in today dollars. So the like, we the cost has exploded since the pandemic, especially for public safety vehicles. So every year. And it would take a dozen years maybe to turn over the entire fleet. And then you would still have to keep funding it. You can't slow down on it.
The super short answer is every year. You know, and and again, if you look at the plans, you know, because we bought more of these things here and those things there, and those are the lifespans, you know, it this year, the, you know, you would only need seventeen, and this year you would need twenty two, and this year, but but on average, you would be looking at twenty million dollars a year in in today's dollars or in future dollars, you'd have to increase that into perpetuity that that would provide a city of our size attempting to provide the services that we would like to provide with the fleet tools that our employees need to do that. But I also think, you know, investing upfront and, you know, modernizing and and bringing our fleet more current, after, you know, the first couple of years, you are going to see those operating costs of maintenance drastically decrease. You know, I mean, we're we come here every year asking you for more, to move money and find more money to repair our vehicles. And, you know, it's still not enough. You know, the rising cost of repairs, especially on these older vehicles and the lead times too of getting parts, not just for street sweepers, but for some of our older, you know, garbage trucks and and things like that, you know, it's deep. The parts are hard to find and they're down for so long, you know, and that drastically affects our ability to pick up trash. So, you know, those maintenance, you know, the shop is is you know, they're they're just, they're just making it day to day, like, what's the fire today? You know, is it garbage trucks? Is it fire trucks? Is it that, you know? They're just, they're just out there with fire extinguishers, basically, you know, just trying to stop the bleeding and and keep as much as they can on the road. And it, you know, I I do not envy their position. And the rising costs, you know, we're we're spending fifty thousand dollars to put a new engine in a fire truck that's probably close to twenty years old. I mean, it the fire truck's probably not even worth fifty thousand dollars, but we have no other choice because we need that fire truck in service. At the people's lives, you know, it's people's lives.
And 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 can anyone at the table talk about you know, other cities that, you know, are that have been in this position? Obviously, we know, you know, you know, revenue, you know, is in some respects is is a silver bullet. But is there other, you know, strategies and tactics that other cities, you know, I know, you know, a certain Maurice, you you know, are very knowledgeable, you know, about, you know, our peer cities and things like that. But is there is there other kind of comprehensive strategies that you have seen cities do to begin to climb out of this hole?
Yes. Similar cities, cities in similar situations have instituted dedicated funds and initiated millages to increase revenue, you know, specifically dedicated to fleet. Other municipalities are examining leasing options a little bit more for for their fleet needs. But it basically boils down to increased revenue.
And is there any particular cities that you would like to point out that we could, you know, in our own time, look at and learn some things from?
I would have that in report, but I believe it's Palm Palm Beach in Florida or, excuse me if I'm mistaken there, but it's a municipality in Florida has dedicated one percent of sales tax revenue for the whole county dedicated for their fleet. They've been able to drop their fleet age and increase the readiness of their public safety fleet drastically. That's all I can really think of off the top of my head right now. But yes, I I've done that research, I'd like to send it to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I had a question and and Director, you may have have, you know, touched on this. I apologize if I missed it. But is there a specific plan around the foam tenders that are not currently in service?
There is, most of it's been around just finding the funding to make the corrections needed. Again, Chief Chief Kokila can give you more details on that.
Okay. And and I think we got other those numbers that you said it was like forty eight percent of of fire vehicles are past their useful life cycle. Is that the verbiage?
Yeah.
We got from the director. And and another question is, how does the authority prioritize fire trucks compared to cars, S U Vs and other not non-emergency vehicles? Is there a certain kind of rationale or rubric that that's?
Yeah. Furman, I cannot stress how great, like, as the person who used to do like the prioritization stuff when I was an asset management analyst, Furman has taken it leaps and bounds beyond what it was. So he's created those weighted measures that that have those like opportunity costs and and what those vehicles are are meant to do and the value of that, to take that into consideration whenever the E L A is trying to prioritize its requests.
And like Councilwoman Gross said, I think a lot of my questions that I had at top of mind, you know, have been asked. I think that exhausts my questions I want to, you know, offer back. I don't know if Councilwoman, well, Councilwoman Gross says she didn't have. Councilwoman Warwick, do you have any additional follow up?
I don't.
Questions? Okay, well, I want to thank the Equipment Leasing Authority for for being here today. I want to wish you a wonderful, you know, holiday season. And if there are no other questions, can I have a motion to recess this meeting?
Sorry, so moved.